America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor T. Delora?
Yes.
Governor Mayor Rowland?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Caprio?
Here.
Councilor Doody?
Here.
Councilor Esposito? Councilor Fawnin?
Here.
Councilor Fuji?
Here.
Councilor Wettworth?
Yes, here.
We have a motion to approve the management of January 17, 2012, regular town council meeting.
I'll move that motion.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Doody, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor T. Delora?
Yes.
Governor Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Doody?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Abstaining.
Councilor Wentworth?
Yes.
Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda, correspondence to Susan Stevens. Unfinished business, discussion and action regarding A, extension of sewers to Gale Drive, update.
Good evening. Some months ago, we got a request for extending sanitary sewers to Gale Drive. I looked at, evaluated the request, and came up with some preliminary processing for extending sanitary sewers in enforcement. That serves partially six homes in Gale Drive. There's basically an existing sanitary sewer line that was put in early 80s as part of that. This area, just to give a little quick overview, this area is part of Gale Drive, a place we discharged in 2000 dollars. It's a bomb package. So, timing is good, and looking at sanitary sewer questions. The idea is to do it now, you might save a little money, and you don't want to be digging up the road, want to fix it. Also, the Gale Drive, actually, there's been requests taken back to about 1995, the installation of sanitary sewers. Some of the property owners, the area, some of the, I think, two or three property owners that were surveyed in this last questionnaire that they sent out, they've had problems, but generally, the other people weren't in favor of it, but really never went anywhere. So, this is a good time to take a relook at the whole picture, and see what the feelings of the neighborhood are. And we're looking at just gravity line, what we call multi-metre, low pressure sanitary sewer force made. Each property owner would have to buy their own grinder pump, which is pumping into the common lines, and then discharging the system, so the line can be applied. So, there's an extra cost that individual property owners will have to bear, connect into this line. Normally, you would make a connection between their house and the street, and it runs like gravity out. Here, there's a mechanical pump that has to be acquired as well.
And you estimated the cost?
Yeah. Basically, the estimated cost of extending sanitary sewers for six properties, about $84,000, divided six ways.
Can I talk about the extra thing that they have to pay?
Okay, which is about $14,000 each, and the grinder pump and insulation quotes ranging from basically $10,000 to $15,000 per property, which, again, that depends on the individual property, what, how long it is, where everything is, the plumbing, and so it's a big number. Basically, sent the questionnaire out in December, I received four responses, I re-sent it to two properties, and that did not respond, and today, I've not reheard from those two property owners. So, of the four returning questionnaires, three have indicated that they were in favor of the installation of sanitary sewers. One is against, and again, two have not returned anything. And I just didn't want to note on the questionnaire, I did note on there, if we didn't hear from anybody, we assumed that they were not interested in sanitary sewers. Again, I haven't heard one way or the other, but that's the result of the survey. And there really are two properties that have existing problems right now with sanitary sewer system. And they have had for many years, the other property owners, I think, look at it, could have sanitary sewers if they ever had a problem, or whether they could correct it. In terms of process, again, we have three out of six in favor, one opposed, and two no responses. Normally, the next response, if it is interested in the WPCA, we report, we generally go onto a public hearing. You might be brought here, they can speak forward, sometimes you get a little bit more of a response at that point, and then it's a six, three, maybe. Whether to move forward with the project, or not. So, that's the result of the survey, and that would be my recommendation, to move forward and schedule a public hearing at the March meeting, at the beginning. But, we send filings out, put the advertising paper, final input, and then we give a decision, and we move forward.
If we're to go forward, what's the cost to the town?
Basically, the town is financing it. Everything gets, clearly, everything gets paid back.
Is there statute of limitations on the people that don't tie in now, that tie in later?
They're assessed.
Oh, okay.
So, they're assessed, and then that runs the length.
Okay, and they have to pay? They have a time period to pay, or something like that?
Twenty years.
Twenty years?
They don't pay it back to the property owner.
Okay.
Yeah, it's totally.
There's no money state or federal anywhere, right?
There's no money out there.
So, how do we set an interest rate?
Based on borrowing, borrow. If we're bonds, it would be based upon bond as well.
Oh, we're in a bond. You said the town was going to finance it.
Well, depending on how we go, that's generally how it has happened in the past. This is smaller.
Reissue a bond for something as small as $84,000, anything?
Probably not. We'd probably use our internal cost of money. We could use 2% to be in line with the state funding levels.
Oh, we have no assurance we can live 2% of funding this?
Yeah. The long horizon doesn't look much better than the short horizon. We just look at the time it came, and follow, and act, and look, see if we've got plans to do it.
All right, I'll move to set the matter for a public hearing in the next agenda, that'll accommodate it.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Fawnin, seconded by Councilor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor T. Delora?
Yes.
Governor Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Doody?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Wettworth?
Yes.
New business, discussion and action regarding A, Connecticut DOT project, number 98-103, Route 139 and Valley Road.
Okay, this is basically about the Route 139 widening and realignment project, the DOT project, the Valley Road, Schoolbound Road, North Ramford, Bramford, Town Line. As part of the DOT's work, what they're proposing is basically widen and realign a portion of Route 139 as a town line. Currently, I don't want to transfer that sanitary sewer meter station right into town line, where we have meter flow from, that we discharge in North Ramford into Bramford. Basically, a money meter to town, we get billed from Bramford based on our meter toll that goes through that meter. Currently, it's off of the road shoulder, and it's a grass portion of the same highway right away. And that road gets realigned, if it stays where it is, it'll be paved portion of the traveling right over the sanitary sewer meter station. That meter station has to get inspected and maintained fairly on a weekly basis. So, in its present location, under steps before, believe it there, that road is realigned because of the safety hazards, people have to, still underground. And also, DOT has a problem with the fact that if we ever have to live in there, we're restricting any traffic flow in the highway agents to prove. So, the DOT has deemed that we need to be relocated, we prefer that, because DOT is also funding 100% of costs of relocation facilities, including construction, engineering, inspection, the whole nine yards. So, the impact is to get that work done and incorporate it in the DOT project. Basically, what we need to do at the town, we need to get design plan to DOT, DOT includes them in their contract documents, and the cost of that improvement, improvement overall, the property property improvement on D1. Time wise, DOT is actually a pretty good fast track for this. They're looking to be done by, basically, the end of June of this year with a design plan, and looking to advertise at the end of August of this year. This sort of threw a little wrinkle in their plan. We'd like to get it moving forward. And what DOT allows, they allow the town to, the engineers to work, town to utilize someone they have on board, do their engineer, do the engineering command, or we could go out for consultants to do the work. What we did, and it just, the only water is our sanitary sewer operations maintenance contractor. They're a huge full-service company. When we went out there, we solicited firms to do the work, maintain our sanitary sewer system. One of the things we did put in our RFP was that they be able to provide design services and require construction services for sanitary sewer improvements. My recommendation, we utilize the only water to move forward, pair of design plans, 100% reimbursable to the state, and it expedites the process to get it. I've got ballpark prices, preliminary costs on some, you know, the engineering, but I have, this all has to go through DOT, DOT has to review it as well. It seems to be the most prudent way to get it done in a timely manner, and it also gets, it keeps the only, who's our contractor, the operating system involved in the whole process, to make sure that what's done works from an operational standpoint as well.
You said you had a ballpark cost?
Yeah, it's about $10,000.
And can we assign that to the only without going out to bid?
Well, and that's what, when we went out to the RFP, that's what I put in there, that would want to be a tent, you know, behind it, if the work comes, we would have somebody to serve it.
Just got that this afternoon, four o'clock. It's just the one with all the candles, all the time. Is this the form from, what is it, Newington?
It's a Newington. It includes your Connecticut DOT, but basically, what it is, in a nutshell, DOT allows us to use somebody on board to go ahead with DOT's new design service support. When we went out and solicited for our sanitary sewer operations and maintenance, we put in the RFP that we wanted somebody that could do design and construction services to the town for the improvement of sanitary sewers. Again, we're a little, we're a full-service company at the time.
Well, the question-
It becomes a specific path.
The question, I think, is, does that trump the bidding provision or ordinances? And we'll address that. You may have, are you saying that we've done that, filed that bid before?
Again, when we went out for a proposal for the engineering, I mean, the sanitary sewer operating services, we put in our request proposal, the firm explained it had the ability to do things, and that basically, designing, construction, sanitary sewer system on a hourly basis.
And they've done other work prior?
They have in the past, yeah.
In the past, on designing pump station modernization and repairs or upgrades of pump systems and so forth, and they provide a turnkey service when it comes to that.
So, they're already under contract, is what you're saying?
Their contract was, you know, for the operations, and again, it becomes a specific item that we have to finalize any kind of fee for, based upon what needs to be done. The idea, when we went out for it, we went out for a full-service company, that was the concept, right?
Right, so maybe them being under contract means that they're going to do the work, and that doesn't have to go out to bid?
Well, this is a new contract that you're asking them to-
It's supposed to be an attachment to their contract.
Yeah.
To simplify that, certainly.
As I said, I only got the document today at four o'clock this afternoon, so I haven't even looked at it.
With your permission, Mr. Mayor, if you would like to table this for this evening, we will, we can add it, because time is of the essence. We would add it at the next meeting as a special WPCA item, so we could give the town attorney an amount of time, and we'd have a chance to analyze the proposal.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to table to the next meeting.
Seconding it.
As a special WPCA.
Moved by Councilor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Doody. Roll call.
Mayor T. Delora?
Yes.
Governor Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Doody?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Wettworth?
Yes.
Item B, sanitary sewers, special connection fee.
At the January WPCA meeting, I was asked to look into the, to look at the special connection fees. Something we had done several years ago, back in about 2008, 2009, and I look at every town, and see what, trying to see what your, connection fees they were charging for residential uses, commercial uses, and other similar type uses. What I did recently, I relooked at, I provided a spreadsheet for the town that looked at, and then I updated surrounding towns, and those are basically pens and whatever. But you can see, they're hand-written in there, and the updated cost. But basically, in a nutshell, what I found is our residential costs are basically something out of 2000, for the dwelling. We're on the high side of the numbers out there, but that was set based upon sort of the most recent cost of sanitary sewer connection, basically, up in the White Hollow Road area. So, sort of limit that. The commercial, industrial, and other type uses, our regulations basically provide for $4,000 for the first five units, you know, for each of the first five units, and $2,000 per unit there, in excess of the five units, again, for commercial, industrial, and others, and non-age restricted type uses. Those basically mimic what Bramford charges, our neighboring towns. Graynor Haven, WPCA, and Cheshire, they actually just updated their regulations, and they increased their special connection fees quite a bit over what they used to have. Basically, they, they had to cost a certain, try to find those rates, maybe what they did prompt for water meter size, or they use, and I didn't make that comparison. And also, all special connection fees that I found entirely paid prior to the connection to the sanitary sewer system by these neighboring towns. So, basically, I found out, these seem to be pretty much in line with most of surrounding towns, I don't think we're on the high side. Graynor Haven is actually quite low. They don't charge much of anything, so there, so they're a little oddballs in terms of the ones on the low.
Does Graynor Haven not have any connection fees for businesses? It just says unchanged, but-
It's unchanged, but it's basically $2,000 house connection lot, or lot, is what I got.
It would be per connection.
Yeah.
So, if it's one, if it's a business, usually doesn't happen that this way, they usually already assess, they had previously been assessed because they're in an industrial or commercial zone, but if it happens, it's one connection per lot, commercial lot that's created in North Ramford.
So, what are we doing, like, say, for an apartment, and we're buying fourteen units in it?
Okay, and basically, the way that is right now, our regulation, each apartment, each unit is a dwelling, so they pay the $12,000.
Per unit.
Per unit. The odd one that came up, well, this property on Bramford Road, it's pre-existing, non-conforming, they're either efficiency units, or maybe one bedroom, or small units. I couldn't find anybody that addressed it and gave any consideration for those undersized units. What I threw out there is some of the things that, that others, we might want to have a reduction in, or a decrease in, non-conforming, undersized units, efficiency units, or one bedroom. But they really don't have, they don't generate a lot of them.
Right, and you're talking, somebody with ten units is at $125,000.
Yeah.
So, that's a little-
People generally don't build those anymore.
Right.
That's not normal for them.
Me neither, not much.
Those, you know, they predate zoning, current standards. On the second page, I sort of threw out a couple things, of where we go from these, and that was one I threw out, I thought, three bullets to the end. One is provide for special connection charges, those undersized residential dwelling units that existed prior to installation of sanitary sewers and streets, funding the affected property. Fifty percent reduction for one bedroom and less room, unless the main was built. On top of the consideration of the special, certainly, we want to sort of consent, like, if I can put wording together, and we can, in the regulation, we can look at it further. Another one, we provide special connection charge for commercial, industrial, or industrial uses upwards or downwards. I mean, that's, we can do that. What I found is we're pretty much, what I see is reasonable. We're not out of line with the town, other ones down the street. You see the whole gamut on the list that's provided, but we seem to, some of these don't seem to be unreasonable.
Except for the undersized dwelling units.
Well, that's the one that sort of stands out, I mean, that's an oddball thing, but it exists, and I'd be curious.
Well, what about, like, in Bradford on the commercial, it says the unit fees for the first, what is, 6.5?
First six and a half units, and that's why we pretty much mimic that. Ours is-
Okay, first six and a half units is $4,000, and then $2,000 after that.
Yeah, and we actually looked at their, theirs, we made our change, what that. The other thing is payment upfront or payment over time. I mean, that's one of the things that-
What we've found over the county?
Well, when we have a special connection, they've been upfront, and we used to assess in the past, but for special connection fees, they require to be paid for upfront. And the small numbers, it's not such a big thing, but some of these, you know, large, you know, if you get a larger development, it's a big number upfront. I talked, Andy, it could be done, we spend all the time, do we charge an interest rate, you know, the underlying rate, 2% or whatever number, it's not to be done. You know, it's a little, it's more on the interest rate as a side, and it's a whole different thing.
What's the minimum square footage to build a residential structure?
Nine hundred square feet.
So, we're really talking about only pre-existing, nine hundred square meters, because we haven't built anything as small as the Bradford Road properties anymore?
Yeah, that's correct.
And if we did something like prorating the fee for undersized units, what protection do we have if somebody decides to expand the unit, comes in for a permit to expand by 50%, and they have a lot of area to allow them to do that? Nothing.
Yeah.
I don't like the idea of giving a reduced fee for an undersized unit, but I do think our overall fee is probably too high. So, I would prefer to see a reduction in the fee that applies to every residential unit. You choose to build a 900 square foot unit, that's your choice. You choose to build 3,000 square feet, that's up to you as well. If you have a pre-existing, non-conforming use, then the reduction in the fee, townwide, would benefit that property owner. But a special reduced rate for that property owner, I think begs for problems.
All right, I'm throwing it out here for discussion and feedback. And I think this is on the finance, you know, let me go back to the finance committee, again.
Been discussed at finance, but maybe there was a request to have it brought back to the town council ultimately. Anything that you decide would be effective, a little public hearing to amend the WPCA regulations.
See, when you look at the residential, other than, other than, you know, kind of units that are either apartments or condominiums, you know, for a single lot, the fee to hook up is less money than if you were in Guilford, Durham, or Madison, than you can put a septic system in for. So, the average residential septic system for a four-bedroom house is probably $15,000 in those towns, and, oh, depending on, but that, you're going to spend at least 12, if you had perfect gravel, and, you know, to build your new house. The problem I see is, in those same towns, now for a business to come in, you know, you can have this great big business with a warehouse and just a little bitty bathroom and stuff, where we were going to whack them by these units, they can go to that town and put in a $15,000 septic system, and they're on their way.
And we're scaring business away, that's what we're doing.
So, I think we have an issue with the, on the business side, and, you know, even Bramford drops it off, but, you know, at 4,000 a unit, times six units, I mean, if you, why would you come to a town in a sewer, with a sewer, if you're not a high-water-using business? You'd go somewhere else and set your business up there. And, so, you know, that's why I wanted to bring this back here, to look at, you know, what we could do, to make it so we're not, you know, because every time someone comes into town to do something with a, with a business, they get the, you get the price for the sewer, and it's like, okay, I'm out of here.
There's another way, sort of, or maybe another way. Again, we face ours, it's basically with dwelling units. And it's, you know, a house, if the dwelling or the apartment is a unit, it's one unit for 1,000 square feet of commercial office units, and one unit for 3,000 square feet of the rest of the use. I didn't spend a lot of time looking at those, but I could look at, the idea, if you raise up that, that number, I mean, which does, it cuts down on the units.
Less units.
Commercial, industrial, that's another avenue to look at that overall picture as well.
And you could add a minimum, minimum payment, it could be $5,000 as a minimum payment, but the unit charge may be only $1,000 for every 10,000 square feet in additional to that. So, there's a way of balancing it out, if you do it somewhat.
Maybe, maybe you could look at that. I mean, I'm all for everybody, business or residential, to pay, you know, for their one unit. I don't want to punish somebody that's going to bring a big business to town, it's like, okay, this is a windfall for the sewer, when it may be a business that doesn't even, isn't going to use the sewer.
Yeah.
So, I, you know, maybe we could look at and see how, what a unit is, what the definition of a unit is in some of the surrounding towns.
The interesting one, if you look at Graynor Haven, Cheshire, what they actually did, they looked at your meter, they did make that difference, they did. Really, what water you have potentially to put in the system, not just of its wide-open square footage, it's, you know, it ties to water consumption. Again, I think they did a pretty elaborate, you know, cost of service study, and had a lot of details that I talked, that I looked at, that was very detailed. I didn't want to keep it on a simpler end, and look, I can certainly look at the square footage, and how units are counted, you know, the minimum, like, the minimum type of units.
But industry and commercial properties have also changed as well over the years. There's less companies looking for space, but using large volumes of water, and those that do have found ways of economizing that, recycling water. They're not discharging into the sewer, because then they're paying for that water twice. So, you don't get the high end on the commercial side, and you're getting bigger business, and retail doesn't generate as much as-
and retail doesn't generate as much as a potential restaurant would, it generates far more than a retail situation. So would you like us to rework some numbers and come back one more time before it gets, potentially gets sent anywhere for public hearings?
Yeah, you, so you think you can try to compare like what a unit is in other towns?
For the wide open age of the town.
Don't you think it's easy to go meter size?
We need to stay in the ballpark with surrounding towns, so we can attract some.
Would it be hard to go with meter size, Kurt?
I'll check it in a minute, we'll report back.
As Cheshire and a few other towns look like they went to?
Yeah. I'll get all that information and try to report how they did that in meter size, because that's a fair way.
Yeah. Well, and then the other thing though, is that, is that a one time, it's not like per unit, it's like the meter for Cheshire.
It's a one time for connection.
Like a two inch meter is twenty-nine thousand, and so that's it.
Right.
Plus the sewer use fee on top of that.
Right, but that's your connection fee, that's your buy into the system, both of them say, you know, you're buying into current and future capital costs. Both of these towns knew they had things, pipeline, they were calculated with that number somehow.
And I mean, we're not stuck with the numbers that they have for cost, we could, you know, we could go lower than that.
Yep.
But at least we have some determination on their water use.
That really is, you know, always the best way, is think on what you have the potential for discharge, all these regulations come up with square footage, you know, they're basic, that's the best people would do in some cases, where you don't have cold water, there's so many variables, and these numbers, the square foot numbers, there is all, every one of these regulations is somewhat different, and it's what they can live with, what they can apply, and get to work. But, yeah, I'll do more and get you back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Set citizen statements and petitions. Regular town council agenda, seven, reports of committees, boards, and commissions, A Economics Development Commission.
Mr. Mayor, the E D C meeting last night was unfortunately canceled due to lack of form and illness of a couple of its members, there is a project that they are working on that will be in all likelihood shifted to middle of March for a community and commercial development meeting, probably here in this chamber as a practice meeting, that would be the next investment, there's another meeting at the E D C prior to that.
Town manager's report.
I will be as brief as I can, as a follow-up to the written report that I submitted with the agenda, we are in the process of gathering all of the budget information from the various departments, that information was due at the end of the month of January, and Anthony has been working diligently to compile all of the information, I think we have just about every department's budget in, and we're putting all of those numbers together, then we'll be forming the revenue package as well. I am pleased to report on behalf of our assessor, our assessor Christine Barta did sign the grant list on time, as of January thirty first, and this is based on the evaluation for November first of two thousand and eleven, and our grant list is going up point four four percent, so forty-four, one hundred, so, four point four percent, point four four percent.
Less than half a percent.
Last year it went up about point two eight percent, so it's a modest increase over that, but it is an increase, so we'll be happy with all of that, I'll send you up the details that we just received on that score, so point four four percent of an increase. On the High School roof project that you'll see later in the meeting, I will comment on E D O four two and get to that point, on N D I S, there's a few issues that have been addressed, the fire marshal and the building official have conducted a full tour of the building relative to certificate of occupancy, and all of the issues related to that have been resolved, so the paperwork will be processed, there have been some repairs affected to the roof area in the D wing that were caused apparently by penetrations of the mechanical system that have been the subject of a number of visitations from the roofing contractor and the mechanical contractor, and the issues relating to the doors at the, at the front entrance, late this afternoon, I received a report in writing from the architect, and those will be addressed at the next permanent project building committee, which is scheduled for the thirteenth. On Swajic and Wallfield relocation, the council should anticipate a presentation from Nevis and Young at the next meeting, we've been working, we've encouraged myself, Pam Gary and Fran with the design staff, and we've gotten some very good input from a potential lighting vendor, free of charge, and working with Wallingford Electric, so that's falling into place, but you should anticipate an updated design on the twenty first. Also, Stanley T. Williams School, we have some revised budget numbers that have come back, and those will be sent to the permanent project, have been sent to the permanent project building committee, the building committee needs to set some priorities on what can be accomplished within the budget if you fall, we only have two hundred thousand dollars in the grant, we did not receive the second round of state funds, so there's an opportunity for more money to be used for this central project, and what the permanent project building committee needs to do is to identify what, how much more money they need to complete this project on a priority basis. The finance subcommittee should be looking at, and the council should anticipate getting some contingency transfer requests in the next couple of meetings, we are running into some situations that require some expenditures, and we're doing so within the existing budgets. I think I briefed the council on one, was a narrow banning for the communication system for the police department, there are a few others that will be presented through the finance subcommittee and throughout the whole council, but we're reaching a point now, at this point in the year, where we're pretty comfortable with where our contingent fund is going to be, so we can start addressing things, one, to go into the cameras for the building, that's a potential allocation, there are a couple of others, including additional funds for communications, we need to work on the cell tower on Commerce Drive, those are the types of things that we're finalizing numbers on, and there may be some additional funds necessary to finish up that communications project, that needs to be done by the end of the fiscal year, so we'll be bringing those forward. On the town's behalf, I attended the regional emergency planning team meeting yesterday, and we found that there are some potential grant dollars that may be filtering down, so the fire chief and I will possibly, some additional funding that could be used for an emergency generator for this building. We had a follow-up meeting after the two storms with representatives of U I, and I'm pleased to report, and I think everyone should be happy to hear, that U I has fundamentally changed their storm response procedures, and we, I at least was fairly impressed with their commitment, they brought a bunch of folks in, and they'll be following it up with us and with some written proposals, but I think they, they've received input from the state's two storm panel, and they put in process some procedures that will make it a lot easier for us to work on ground level, and really have followed what Wallingford Electric have been doing for the last couple of storms, so we're pleased to hear that. The fire chief is working with an Eagle Scout on a fire hydrant identification project, in our current budget, there's funding to put markers on about sixty percent of our units that are out there.
Should be a hundred percent of the budget.
And we're looking to conclude that, this is an all volunteer project, but if we need additional funds, this would be something we would come back for additional funding to continue to count. Also, for your information, the Parks and Recreation Commission will be holding an informational meeting and has invited all of the leagues that are affiliated or that use town fields, we're meeting on February twenty seventh, where the draft of their rule, facility rules and policies will be put forth, and they'll accept comments, and then they can adopt from there, I will be attending that meeting as well.
Where is the meeting, Richard?
It's at the Park and Recreation Building, the twenty seventh, and that meeting, that portion of the meeting starts at eight o'clock. The, getting back to emergency communications, under the grant that we received to upgrade our police fire and public works radio system, we need to go through certain F C C licensing, that licensing has, needs to be accomplished in the next couple of months, and for some reason, F C C has fallen behind in their, their schedule, and either through manpower shortages or whatever, so I am going to contact Rosa Delora's office to see if we can push them along, as we did in support of a grant application for the fire outbreak for the fire department, for the oxygen recharge system that will be located in the twenty two. So with that, unless there are any questions, that would be my.
Thank you, Richard. Community events and presentations. On February twenty ninth will be the State of the Town address here at Town Hall at seven thirty A M, there will be a light breakfast served sponsored by the Chamber, Senator Meyer, state representative, and Senator Delora, myself, town manager, Superintendent Scott Skulmac will be here, sponsored by the Chamber, I believe it's ten dollars per person, and fifteen dollars for non-members of the Chamber. Citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence. Item A, Connecticut Siting Council, letter dated January twenty third, two thousand and twelve regarding cell tower eighty-eight Parson at Hill Road, North Bramford.
Well, I looked up the regulation, and based on the letter that we have from Robinson and Cold, the reasons that are cited for the modification are all the reasons that are exempt from considering any type of a change, so they basically, as a matter of right, may do the things that they said they were going to do in that letter, under the regulations.
The letter states that Connecticut Siting Council received this request to modify an existing telecommunications facility pursuant to regulations of Connecticut State Agency, section sixteen fifty J dash seventy-two, if you have any questions or comments regarding this proposal, please call or inform the council by February sixth, two thousand and twelve, thank you for your cooperation and consideration, very truly yours, Linda Roberts, Executive Director. Item B, Jim Dwyer, letter dated February first, two thousand and twelve. Dear Town Council members of North Bramford, now is the time for this town council to look into providing the Board of Education with the monetary funds for implementing full day kindergarten classes for this town's educational system. In the near future, the State Board of Education will be requiring that all towns provide full day kindergarten classes, please consider allotting funds for the future budget for full day kindergarten classes and our town educational system, thank you, sincerely, Jim Dwyer, retired North Bramford teacher. Jim Dwyer, one twenty-one Summit Drive, North Bramford, Connecticut.
Want me to amend this now?
Eleven. Educations and appointments.
We'll do these and then we'll amend it.
Sure. Item A, reappointment, Steve Scavo to Planning and Zoning Commission, member of the Conservation and Inland Wetlands and Water Course Agency, term to expire five thirty-one, two thousand and twelve.
I'd like to move that appointment to both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Inland Wetlands.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Watworth, seconded by Councilor Duty, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Duty?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Pucci?
Yes.
Counselor Watworth?
Yes.
Item B, appointment Bruce Watworth to the Parks and Recreation Committee, term to expire twelve thirty-one thirteen.
So moved, second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Esposito, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duty?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Pucci?
Yes.
Counselor Watworth?
Next thing.
Reappointment Mary Ann Auger, Housing Authority, term to expire six thirty fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Esposito, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duty?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Pucci?
Yes.
Counselor Watworth?
Yes.
Reappointment Joanne Watworth, South Central Connecticut Cable Advisory Commission, term to expire six thirty thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fawnin, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duty?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Pucci?
Yes.
Counselor Watworth?
Next thing.
Item E, reappointment Mary Bagelow to Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee, term to expire twelve thirty-one thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Watworth, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duty?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Pucci?
Yes.
Counselor Watworth?
Yes.
I wanna, I wanna make a motion to amend the agenda, we got a leaked, a leaked letter from the superintendent of schools for the permanent project building committee, they want, so I'm gonna do, I'll amend for F, will be to put Edward Cordino to represent the Board of Education, we gotta do each name individually, right? We got three of them here, so, okay, so F would be that, in my motion though, I can do G and H at the same time. Alright, so we're gonna do, G will be Lou Paternoster, and they're gonna be full members of the permanent project building committee, we'll do H, David McMahon will be an alternate on the permanent project building committee, and I guess we'll do I, on the pension committee for the Board of Ed would be Anthony Ferriola. I got this.
Lou Paternoster.
Lou Paternoster.
Who is that?
Alter. Again, the first one was.
Anthony Ferriola was the pension.
The last one. Ed Cordino was. Ed Cordino, okay.
Permanent project.
So we got Cordino, Paternoster. So what letter are we up to now? F, G, H, J.
J, K.
So on J, do we need to put Lou?
We got, we got.
We got everybody then.
J and K will be Joanna and Joe.
Alright, so, yeah, alright, so J would be to put Joe Fawnin on the pension committee?
Yep.
Yep.
And K will be to put Joanne Wentworth on the Pension Committee. There, that's a long motion.
I second it.
Did you repeat that?
Let's just make sure we have this.
Right.
This is to amend the agenda.
All right.
First, we just amend the agenda.
This is the motion just to amend the agenda.
To add these appointments.
Right, add the appointments, right.
I believe Deputy Mayor Rose made the motion.
I'll second the motion, her husband seconded.
And the motion was seconded by Counselor Fucy to amend the agenda to add the appointments F through K.
H.
I got K.
K is K, sorry. J is J.
Can we just go F through K instead of?
Yeah, because the motion, it was one motion.
Can we do that, John?
Yeah, just to amend.
Just so Mary has it right.
Yeah.
F, Ed Cordino, G, Lou Pattenoster, H, David McMahon, I, Anthony Ferriola, Ferriola, whatever.
However.
J is Joe Fawnin.
No. G is Lou Pattenoster.
Oh, G is Lou Pattenoster.
Well, this is the Pension Committee now you're going on to.
Right, Lou is an alternate to the pension and he's a member of the Permanent Project Building Committee.
So this is a separate meeting.
Okay.
All these people, I think, serve at the two years of the council. Because every two years when the council changes, they have to be reappointed or renamed. So there's no really term, it's just at the end of the council.
On the Pension Committee.
On all of them.
And then the Board of Education.
On the Permanent Project Building Committee, Pension Committee.
Shall we put all on J?
Got it.
All right. For the amended, amendment to the motion.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Abstain.
Counselor Fuji.
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Appointment, I need a motion for an appointment for the Permanent Project Building Committee to add Edward Cordino.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Rose, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Fuji.
Yes.
Item G, appointment to the Permanent Project Building Committee for the BOE, Lou Pattenoster.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Esposito, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Fuji.
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth.
Yes.
And we've got to fill in their terms.
They're just running two years.
Two years, right. Item H, to the Permanent Project Building Committee for BOE, alternate Dave McMahon.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Fuji.
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item I, BOE appointment Anthony Ferriola to the Pension Committee.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Esposito, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Fuji.
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item, I believe it's, item J, which will be Lou Pattenoster to the Pension Committee as an alternate from the BOE.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Rose, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Fuji.
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth.
Yes.
And then item K to the Finance Committee, or Pension Committee?
Pension Committee.
Pension Committee, Joe Fawnin.
That's J.
How was J?
No.
No, it's K.
It was Lou as an alternate.
Yeah.
We snuck in a, yeah. We snuck in an extra one there.
Two different committees.
We tricked you.
Yeah, so we're appointing Joe back to the Pension Committee, which is K.
Second.
Let me hit the motion first.
I'll move it.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Rose, seconded by Counselor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Abstain.
Counselor Fuji.
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth.
Yes.
And then L. Right, I think we did her last year, we'll do it again. And then item L, Joanne Wentworth to the Pension Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Fuji.
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Item 12, unfinished business discussion in action.
Can we affirm Al Rose's position on the Finance Committee as chairman, just to make sure, because tomorrow I think there's a Pension Committee.
Yeah, we did that at the last meeting.
I know we did, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pension, Pension and Finance committee.
Right.
Yeah, I know.
What time is the Finance?
Five.
Five.
What time is the Pension for?
Double header.
Is there a light dinner or?
Item 12, unfinished business discussion in action regarding A, North Bramford High
School Roof. Mayor, there's been no further action to report on this other than we have been working on development of the request for qualification for architectural services for design of the roofed project. It's my understanding that we've received some additional information from the state that this may indeed not be necessary to obtain the funding from the school facilities unit. That's new information, I have not been able to sort that out, but if that's the case and we do not have to hire an architect to design and we can get the approval some other way, then that would certainly save the town a considerable amount of money and still be able to get the reimbursement from the state. So I, needless to say, will be contacting State Representative Candelaure who has provided some of this information to us and I will fill the council in as soon as possible. Hopefully, I will have a result to report in my Friday report by the end of this week. So I'll target that to let you know what's, what the status is on this project.
Where are we at with that, Richard, on that, on the roof? What are we doing with, you know, if we need a roofing consultant, we need to go out to get one of them now? I mean, we were using Mark Caputo for the last project. So do we, you know, where are we at with that?
Are we talking about design consultant or?
Yeah, like, what do we do next on the roof? Do we need to get, you know, how do we not get in trouble and go forward with looking at the rest of the roof and what's next and all that?
The council will have an option to hire, hire an architect regardless of, or roof design consultant. It has to be a licensed architect under what was my understanding of the guidelines from the state for the school facilities unit. As I said just a minute ago, now we're hearing different information that may not in fact be required. In that case, the council could solicit an RFP for a design professional that is not an architect to design the rest of their roof.
For a roofing specialist.
Yeah, roofing specialist to take us to the, to the end of it because we kind of treated the last go around as a sequence and it was an emergency type timeframe. You're not bound by that. The one suggestion we've had come back to us is there are certain certifications that are required, there's a registered roof observer, there's a set of credentials that are required to meet that, and I believe that's the title. It's been suggested that whoever we hire to do this next process, we have someone on the roof that has a, a level of credentials at least equivalent to that.
Okay, so we have to wait and clear this up with the state on.
To determine.
To make sure we hire the right person.
Right, how we're going to procure it and then our procurement is, is per standard process.
Was the EDO 49 done for the, what the roof that we did do, was that submitted?
Yes, I believe it was. It was done.
This past summer?
Yes.
Okay.
So in other words, we're waiting to, to be eligible for, for the EDO 49, we may have to go out to an architect rather than use that design consultant that we did last summer? We don't know that yet, is that?
We don't know that yet, but it's for that next phase.
Next phase.
What we've done so far is, is and will be hopefully the subject of special legislation that Representative Candelaure worked on. It's the next phase of that.
But we do have kind of a sequence, like we know from what we did last summer which ones are in the most need of repair next, right? I mean, we do have kind of a.
I think.
Idea on that.
Mark Caputo was, presented his last presentation to the Town Council that the remaining sections of the high school roof all need to be repaired.
Everything that's left.
Patching as we go and I think I reported at the last council meeting that there was, has been one additional leak that was repaired almost immediately by school staff, but everything else that we have that's been done is holding it in place. So we're ready for this next phase of the leak.
I'll plug it some of the gym.
Item B, charter revision. I believe we already decided on what, seven panel.
Right, we have to point. And we have to do their recommendations as to what areas of that.
I mean, are we prepared to do that right now?
I don't know that we're prepared, I mean, a few people have sent in names and that's why I wanted to ask everybody tonight, how do we want to move forward as far as putting this together? You know, I have been forwarded a few names from, you know, different counselors and a few citizens, so I've been keeping track. Maybe what I'll do is put out an email to all of you of the names that I have so far.
And maybe we should publish, well, maybe we should publish part of like the next agenda or something, anybody that's expressed interest and anybody that any of us feel we want to nominate and put together a comprehensive list from which we can make nominations.
Right.
And from there, do we know what items or?
Well, there were some things that.
I missed the last meeting, but.
Well, there were some things that we discussed and then Lisa Valenti had submitted some items that she wanted us to look at also.
Okay.
But charter revision actually can look at the whole charter. We can make our recommendations as to what.
Exactly.
We want them to look at, but they actually can look at everything.
So anything's open?
Right, right.
Can we get a.
Because I thought the last time we said it wasn't.
What items are people want you, us to look at?
Specific items, the last time we did that.
Really house nominations. We're all concerned about the project referendum.
Right.
There was a few other items too.
Do we need a short resume or no, just get the names and we should be okay.
The names you're going to pop up are going to be people that are known.
That are known, right? That's what I think.
I don't think.
How many counselors are going to be on this?
I think limited.
To two.
Is it two?
Two.
Because there's seven members, so we can have a max of two.
Nobody else.
Just as a point of order, you passed the action to form a Charter Revision Commission on January 17th. You have 30 days to appoint the people. You're not going to be able to do that. So essentially, your next item of business is to declare that action null and void and simply restate your motion again so you get another 30 days. So you have a little bit more, in a sense, you should have a little more time to think about this. But keep in mind, on most of these steps, there's a clock ticking and.
So the next meeting, we have to appoint this commission?
You have to reappoint.
I think you've got to.
You have to reappoint.
Resend the previous motion.
Right.
And start a new one.
Start a new Charter Revision Commission tonight.
We have to do that tonight, yeah. Why don't we do that, but also wouldn't it make sense that if Richard could recirculate the criteria for nominees, because there were specific criteria, party allegiance, number of people that are elected officials, the limitation on that, so that we, if you're, the only to put up the name of multiple people, at least make sure they fit within that criteria.
That should be in that summary if anybody still has it.
It was, maybe he should recirculate.
Yeah.
So when you said. I'll make them, I'll go.
I'd like to make the motion to rescind the first motion that we made against Charter I'd like to make the motion to rescind the first motion that we made against charter revision commission.
Second.
Moved by councillor Wentworth, seconded by councillor Esposito, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councillor Caprio?
Yes.
Councillor Dooty?
Yes.
Councillor Esposito?
Yes.
Councillor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councillor Fuji?
Yes.
I'd like to now make a motion to redo the charter commission, appoint or establish a charter revision commission. Second.
Well, you have to say how many consist of.
Consisting of seven members.
No.
Moved by councillor Esposito, seconded by councillor Fawnin.
Discussion. Do we want to do that tonight, or do we want to get seven people that we're going to agree on?
Just so your clock starts ticking at the next meeting.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking, maybe we won't have that.
Well, I think, is seventeen too late, John, for our, we're not, we're within the time period still?
Well, your thirty days is going to run from today now, so you would have to have people appointed by March eighth, or actually-
I just want to make sure that we're going to agree on seven people. I think, why don't we agree on seven people?
Can we make the motion the night of the meeting?
Yeah, I think we can do it. Al was suggesting that you kind of have the people lined up who you want to put in.
Make the motion that night.
And then go into the people.
You can certainly do it the same night that you appoint the commission.
Now, is there a time limit on this whole revision?
Yes.
Was it like November or something?
Well, if you want to get it on the ballot for November, then you have to look at that so that your meeting dates, your public hearings and everything is done, so you can hold it at that same election time.
We need to start moving on. I mean, so ideally, we'd want to have seven names that we agree on the next meeting, but-
And then the clock will start.
Right.
I'll rescind my motion to, for the charter revision appointments, or to establish the charter revision.
Would you be with me for a second?
I'm withdrawing a second, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
All right, moving on.
God, I did that.
All right. New business, discussion in action. Item A, repetitive flood claim, application for acquisition of sixty-four Crossview Road, Connecticut DEP, fiscal year two thousand and eleven flood mitigation assistance grant.
Again, back in two thousand and ten, the town submitted an application for a grant for basically repetitive flood claims, grant to the DEP for the acquisition and demolition of sixty-four Crossview Road. Discussions, you know, had occurred prior with the town council regarding, sometime in the past about the problems that property was having, the flooding events, we actually had a hydraulic study done of the property to see if there are any other improvements that could be made. The conclusion was that the property is going to flood no matter what during major flood events. And I think property, there was four or five flood events that the property experienced in the past twenty-five or so years, which were covered under, they had, required to have flood insurance. FEMA covers the claims, they have to go through the process, and that's the reason why FEMA provides these funds out there. Frequently flooding the property, they prefer to see the property acquired, demolished, and so they don't have to deal with it anymore and continue to pay flood claims. So we submit that in the end of two thousand and ten, and the fall of two thousand and eleven, we received notice that we have been approved for the grant request, and then at the end of two thousand and eleven, we actually received the draft, no, actually the agreement, proposed agreement from DEP to enter into between the town and the state for the acquisition and demolition of the property. When it was submitted to DEP, basically the underlying criteria, the benefit had to exceed the cost, DEP had a program that figured it all out. There aren't a lot of costs to it, you know, and I sort of relooked at the cost numbers that went into it, but that's the biggest concern to make it, so there's no cost to the town. I mean, the benefits to the property owner in terms of, it's also a recurring problem, and FEMA is happy to be out because of the costs associated with it. Again, basically, the acquisition of the property, then demolition of the structures, and then maintaining the property perpetuity has open space.
These numbers were already agreed upon?
Well, the numbers, the appraisal number, the appraisal submitted to DEP is part of it, that number, approved by Fraser, that's the number they use, so that's a good number. The ones that aren't, I've got quotes from people to get an idea what the number would be with demolition costs, that's really the other, other costs that's, you know, out there.
But the owners agreed to these numbers?
Well, it's not a matter of disagreement, it becomes a town's project, the town administers says the town has to acquire the property, and the town has to demolish it.
So then the owner has no say in it?
So, we would have to acquire the property, pay them, you know, the appraised values.
What's it like, an eminent domain type thing?
No, they have to be a willing participant, and they are.
Okay.
They are.
As long as they're willing.
Yeah, the biggest concern is, is they aren't hard numbers, because we have to opt to deal with demolition. I think I've thrown contingency in there and the like, the concern is, it really shouldn't cost the town anything, the town, helping this whole process through. And I discussed that with DEP. Only if we happen, we could enter into the grant agreement, go through, put all these items out of bid, get true costs before we acquire the property, and then make a final decision, we move forward or not.
Kurt, this is a two-part, right? The first part's already been done, which is-
Nothing's-
I thought we got approval from-
We got approval?
Yeah.
This is actually doing the work, just acquiring the property and demolishing the structures on there. This is where the money exchanges hands between the town and the state, and then the town and the property owner, when we acquire, if we acquire the property. So-
So what you have to do is go out and get heard numbers?
Again, it's chicken and egg, what comes first? I think the whole underlying thought behind this, at least in my eyes, is we're trying to facilitate this, make this happen so that there is no more flooding problem over there. We're going to make sure it doesn't cost the town, you know, we're not spending town monies to solve the problem. I think the numbers are good. I've got quotes, I've rechecked and re-verified them since I did that, but the only way I think we have to bid out the demolition of the property, and, you know, and the work associated with that. And then we'll have hard numbers, I'm hoping they come a little lower, but until we do that, I don't know. And in my mind, you know, the only thing is, if we have a budget of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred, we don't want to be over that. As long as we're under that, we're good. But I don't think we want, my recommendation would be to go ahead and authorize the execution of the agreement. On the other hand, we're not spending any money or going to acquire any property until we have hard numbers and we report back to council, these are the final numbers, and then we get an authorization to actually do the work. And again, one thing, and I read this by DEP, if this cost goes over by five thousand dollars, I mean, the DEP has no issue if the town enters into a signed agreement with the property owner and says, anything over this number is on you, on the property loss. That can be done according to what DEP has told me, you know, so that we have our, you know, cost limit there as well.
So what, it comes out of the price?
The property owner, you know, I discussed the same thing with him, and he's certainly aware of that.
And it comes out of the price of what the government's giving him for the house?
That will have to be the agreement between the town and the property owner. Again, that's the concern that I see in this whole thing. You know, if you have funds which appear to be adequate to protect the town, we want to make sure if it goes over, it's not on the, you know, the town's dime. This is all reversible money, but if it goes over to three twenty-nine five, it should not be a town cost.
Kurt, so you-
That's about a grant.
That's about a grant.
So the, so the state is paying for it?
The state pays.
Paying the whole thing. But it's one of those adhesion contracts where you have absolutely no ability to negotiate. We've seen those before, where the state can terminate the contract whenever it wants to, in the best interest of the state. You have to indemnify the state if anything goes wrong of any subcontract you use, let's say, to demolish property. I mean, it's a fact of life, that it's not something that can be negotiated.
We praised the property.
Normally enter into a contract like that, but then again, you're getting all the funds from the state's, but you are on the hook, you have to make sure that your subs comply with all the policies, with minority hiring, and any other, any other issues that may arise.
But again, John, the issue is, if this cost goes over that number, and we have estimates, we don't have hard numbers, according to DEP, you know, if we have entered a signed agreement with the property owner that any cost beyond that, or on that, essentially, they have no issue with that. Again, the idea that it should not be town funds expended for the acquisition of a private property, that was sort of the fault process going into it.
So you're looking to us for a motion to acquire the property, the total cost for acquisition of the property?
Suggest a motion to authorize, which basically enters into the agreement.
At a maximum cost of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Right.
For acquisition and permitting all associated work with demolition or removal of the improvements on the property.
Okay, well, there's the suggestive motion that DEP, you have to basically, is there a word in-
I don't like this, it's a motion that doesn't say a maximum of three twenty-nine five.
Well, the agreement will provide the maximum of three twenty-nine five.
Here, we should stay.
We have no authority to spend over that. This is no appropriation, no separate for the town appropriation to that. We can only stand up to that amount.
So we're going to adopt a resolution that authorizes you to enter into a contract to acquire this property and demolish it on behalf of the town. Nowhere are we going to talk about dollars and cents, and then somehow imputed into the contract is going to be an agreement, the maximum cost is going to be three twenty-nine five.
I have no issue if we come back, we table this, and I talk to John, and get some warning in there.
Yeah, that certainly- You don't adopt resolutions where you've got a cap on your cost without setting that for, in the resolution.
And if we have more conditions on there, you don't spend funds until we have bid all these things.
Does John need to make a separate contract?
I don't want to go ahead and start, you know, taking all the steps, acquire something until we have our bid numbers together, so we know that we can go forward with it, that we can talk about, I can talk about that agreement, you know, and agreement with John.
I think the agreement has got to be key to the amount of money that's available. And one factor you've got in here is asbestos and lead paint survey, two thousand dollars. Now, I'm sure that's more than enough to conduct the survey, but suppose it comes back and says, yeah, there's asbestos here, it has to be remediated. So you got to go hire men in spacesuits, and it's not going to happen for two thousand dollars.
I'd like to make a motion to table this, so we get all the, all the information that we need, and have John review it.
John, do you want to comment?
No, I have reviewed the contract, I've seen this before, whenever we're getting state grants, they have a flat iron contract where you have to indemnify them, they can terminate anytime they want. I mean, it's just the way it is. And I think, from what I'm hearing from Kurt and from the comments that Joe was making, that we ought to sort of do the cart before the horse here and find out, is this amount acceptable to the homeowner? Are there any tests that should be, soil tests that should be conducted or whatever that could impose additional liability on us? We're responsible for all the liabilities once this deal starts. And, but again, I mean, I'm not trying to be pessimistic, but we don't have a lot of control once we put the ball in play here. And I'll talk with Kurt to see if we can do certain things, get certain things lined up in advance so that we have some certainty from our end.
All right, so the motion was to table, join in motion. A motion by councillor Wentworth, councillor Esposito, roll call.
Could we, I got a question for Kurt before we vote on this. Under their, in their appendix A, under the monitoring and reporting, it says every three years, we have to submit a report to the HMA, and that's for like ever and ever and ever? There's no way to get out of that? I mean, that seems like, and what's the penalty if you don't do it in three years? I mean, so we're known as the contractor.
We're known as the contractor.
And we have to, so we have to check it, which would mean like public works to yourself, we'd have to go there and make sure it's open space, and then-
Pretty much to make sure somebody-
Now, who's HMA?
Our-
Who is HMA that we-
Well, that's the hazard litigation agency or something.
So I guess my question is, so we don't get paid for monitoring it for every three years forever?
No, that's correct.
Okay.
This is, this I think is new, I haven't seen this in any of their previous contracts, but it's, they want to make sure that we're complying with FEMA regulations, and so every three years, there are going to be requirements to check in, to report. I mean, everything should go okay, but it is, it's just a little more red tape, I guess you'd say. And I haven't seen that before, I don't know if you have, Kurt.
No, this is one tie, is the fact that it's not a mission.
When was the house built? When was the house built?
Mid-seven?
Mid-seven? Seventeen?
Oh, well, we'll have our money, so if we screw up and don't send one in, what are they going to do? Call us to build the house back? All right, I'm good, we can-
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councillor Caprio?
Yes.
Councillor Dooty?
Yes.
Councillor Esposito?
Yes.
Councillor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councillor Fuji?
Yes.
Councillor Wettler?
Yes.
Item C, Commerce Drive Cell Tower and Town Lease Agreement.
Mr. Mayor, this was the, part of the subject of the amended agenda that was filed, and this authorization allows us to execute the lease agreement, but then reviewed by the town attorney, and we fought this for a dollar a year. We recall this is on Commerce Drive, the subject of the, the updated communications that the mayor had, partly recommended, and so thankfully, finance correct, and it's very nice, and getting us a motion forward.
I'll move the motion.
Second.
Moved by councillor Angeloni, seconded by councillor Dooty, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Epstein.
Councillor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councillor Caprio?
Yes.
Councillor Dooty?
Yes.
Councillor Esposito?
Yes.
Councillor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councillor Fuji?
Yes.
Councillor Wettler?
Yes.
Item C, Commerce Drive Cell Tower and Town Lease Agreement.
Mr. Mayor, this was the, part of the subject of the amended agenda that was filed, and this authorization allows us to execute the lease agreement, but then reviewed by the town attorney, and we fought this for a dollar a year. We recall this is on Commerce Drive, the subject of the, the updated communications that the mayor had, partly recommended, and so thankfully, finance correct, and it's very nice, and getting us a motion forward.
I'll move the motion.
Second.
Moved by councillor Wentworth, seconded by councillor Esposito, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councillor Caprio?
Yes.
Councillor Dooty?
Yes.
Councillor Esposito?
Yes.
Councillor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councillor Fuji?
Yes.
Councillor Wettler?
Yes.
Item fourteen, citizen's statements and petitions.
Roger.
Roger, I'd just like to remind the town council, I said it a few more times, I'm still interested in whether they consider this, whether they are trying to, I don't know what my name is, but I'm just considering.
I have a statement I'd like to make. Last week, we had a little, lived probably at my house with my six-week-old granddaughter, and we had a call nine-one-one, and I have to say that they did an excellent job, the police department was there in just five minutes, and right behind them was the ambulance and the fire department, and thank God, everything came out all right for my granddaughter. She was having a little difficulty breathing, she was pre-maturating, she was only six weeks old, so they got her straightened out, they got her oxygen, and they kept her in the hospital all day, and everything's fine, so I just want to thank everybody from the bottom of my heart.
Thanks, everything's good now?
Everything's great.
I have a citizen's statement to make. Two weeks ago, around eleven AM, I answered and knocked at the door to find an officer holding this manila envelope. He stated he was told to deliver this to me. Inside contained a plaque, and basically, the plaque said Deputy Chief Michael Dooty for thirty or forty years of dedicated service to the town in North Branford. Always tried to strive to serve the people in North Branford with pride, I've tried to live by a code of ethics and set morals that I have attempted to give myself unselfishly. I'm proud to have served this town and its citizens for nearly thirty-four years. Having said this, the rest of the plaque is a bold-faced lie and insult, says was presented by the North Branford Board of Police Commissioners, GDM Triano, July two thousand and eleven. Only a police commission and its chairman have any idea what the purpose of signing the delivery of package to my home by a uniformed officer was. It's been six months, numerous police commission meetings, and any number of days when this plaque could have been presented as stated. I cannot hazard as to guess why the cowardly commission was prevented from standing in a room with me presenting this plaque to me, as do my years of service. I personally find the vindictiveness worrisome and the continued hostility to a point of concern for the town. Hopeful, however, juvenile antics as this, supported by our police commission and the chief of police, are embarrassing for the town, as well as me and my family. I ask the town council and the citizens one question, is this the quality of leadership that we want to continue to condone in support of North Branford? I think we all deserve better.
I send the motion.
That's in my statement.
Hi, town council members. I'm a senior, we... Town resident, and I retired a police officer on September sixteenth, twenty-second. On the same day, Deputy Chief received his plaque, I received my plaque in the same manner, and delivered by an officer at my residence. I retired in September, and at a retirement party shortly after, Deputy Chief was fourth retired in July, and at his retirement party in October. A single police commissioner, or the police chief, or even a representative from the police department was there to acknowledge our retirement and thank us for our years of service to the town of North Branford. A day after I received my plaque, I received a text message from one of the officers. He stated, why wasn't he invited to my plaque ceremony of the police department? Ha, ha, ha. It's just not Mike and myself who know why we didn't receive the ceremony. The delivery of the plaques was done on purpose, and to show that someone had the last laugh. I personally saw commissioners, police commissioners, Landolphian Kazi in late September, and I asked if Mike and I would receive our plaques since the chief disliked us. I was assured by the two commissioners that they would take care of it, and they would be hearing from, I would be hearing from them shortly. Mike Duddy can confirm, for the last thirty-five years, we were the only officers who are retired and have not acknowledged by the police commission at a public meeting. A week before our plaques were delivered, a brother officer retired. At his retirement party, Chief Cannelli did a farewell speech, and other commissioners were attendants. Commissioner Plumble personally presented a retirement plaque to Sergeant Mannor for his thirty-five years of service to the town of North Branford. What possible motive could there be for not allowing myself and Deputy Chief Duddy to attend a police, a public police commission meeting to present the retirement plaques? Mike and I have nothing to be ashamed of, but it sure seems that the police commission, especially G. D. Antriano, whose name is on the plaque to me stating, presented by, and the police chief does. This is disturbing behavior by grown men placed in the position of authority, is a slap in the face, and a call that they are allowed to freely conduct themselves in such an unprofessional manner. Thank you.
This is Potter, twelve fifty-one, on Town Avenue, I was going to try to get by without commenting on anything. I would like to see this council propose a resolution tonight, that you demand that the police commission, and the proper officers, and all the members of the police department be here for your next meeting, if you have to certify letters to get them here, and acknowledge the service of these two findings and one. It's disgusting what I just heard, and I'm very upset with the ethics. You people are working hard to rebuild the town, and in five minutes, it's back in the gutter, and I'm disgusted.
Any more statements? Motion going to executive session.
Make the motion go into executive session, under Section One dash two-hundred-and-sixty, pending claims, invite the town attorney and the town manager.
Second.
Moved by Councillor Angeloni, seconded by Councillor Esposito, non-executive second. Roll call.
Mayor Candylora.
Yes.
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Caprio.
Yes.
Councillor Duddy.
Yes.
Councillor Esposito.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councillor Fuji.
Yes.
Councillor Wettler.
Yes.